Calling the November General Government Meeting to order. Need a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented?
Some of them.
Moved by Walls, supported by Poleski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Any public comment? We'll go past that then. No public comment today. Going on to item four. We have the minutes. Need a motion and support to pass the minutes as presented?
Some.
Oh, those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Motion by Poleski?
Snell.
Snell?
Poleski, second.
Okay. Supported by Poleski. Thank you. Got lost here in my own computer. Yeah. A second. Okay. Move on to item four B. Appointments for this month. We have one, two. We have material management committee. We have a point. We need applicants for material recovery. Facility operator. Composting facility operator. Elected official of a township. Elected official of a city or village. Representative of a business that generates managed materials. And a Region Two representative. We'll have to readvertise for those because we don't have any applicants.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, there's an attachment here from Waste Management. And I guess what I would ask is that the committee forward her to Tuesday night. She's, I realize she's from St. Clair Shores, but she's representing Waste Management for us in the Materials Management Plan.
That would be Betty Trumper?
Yeah.
Representing Waste Management.
We don't need to place her anywhere. I talked to Region Two Planning today about that just now. And we can just make her an at-large position and qualify her Tuesday night.
Yes. I agree with that 100%. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Mr. Poleski.
So I just want to make sure I understand that. If it's an, does, I think we've got listed here the statutorily provided members of that plan. Can we have at-large members of a committee whose membership is defined by state law?
According to Region Two Planning, yes, we can.
Can we have her be the Region Two Planning Commission representative?
No, she's not a member of Region Two Planning. So what she, where she fits, sir, is under Materials Recovery Facility Operator. But she didn't apply for that. She just applied to serve on the committee.
And she is, that was, a director for Waste Management in area over around Metro Detroit. So she probably would qualify for Material Recovery Facility Operator.
Why don't we put her in that spot then?
All right. That's a motion.
I think, yes, that's a nomination for that spot. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. So we'll add her to our list. Second committee is the Land Bank Authority. Public member concerning, with ties to construction. Tim Golding is the current member. He has not reapplied. We can try to get a hold of him, but otherwise we should advertise it too. So I think we have been a hold of him. I'm not sure. We have no applicant at this time. That's it for appointments. We'll go on now to item C. The Conservation District Quarterly Report. Welcome, Lori.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. So last time I was here was May. So let's see. We had 11 landowners run at our no-till grain drill. Forty-five acres of native grasses and food plots and cover crops were planted. Household hazardous waste events this year were, we were finished in, at the end of September. So May 21st, July 25th, and September 26th. And we collected just shy of 25 tons of hazardous waste in this season. And we already have pending funding. We have, the first collection is scheduled for Thursday, May 22nd. Our Adopt a Stream program, our last collection was on October 19th. We had enough people to sample two sites. The Leoni Mill Pond and Cascades Park. And then our bug ID will take place in January. We were able to attend the Jackson County Fair, Learning Fair, Birds, Blooms, and Butterflies Festival at the Dolem Center. Outdoor Jamboree at Lake Hudson Rec Area. As far as outreach, we did some mobile boat washes in Jackson County throughout the summer for, with our SISMA Coordinator. Scrap tire collection event. We did have 14 of Jackson's 19 townships participate this year. We collected about 8,200 scrap tires. In the countywide one, we collected 1,460. So we had two trailers. Each year, we're collecting fewer tires. So that's a good thing. We're getting them out of the county. Some of the townships have gone from doing it every year to every other year because their, their numbers are so low. So that was our goal. We did our Adopt a Highway in September, collected 18 bags of trash between Wells Road and Napoleon Road on M-50. Did some invasive species survey for European frog bit, Japanese knotweed, mylamine weed, tree of heaven, Japanese steelgrass. We had five volunteers that helped us with the household hazardous waste event. And then Adopt a Stream, we had five volunteers as well. The household hazardous waste volunteers, it's been the same five volunteers. And they each, throughout the course of the three collections, each worked 24 hours just out of the goodness of their heart. Yes.
The next year's household hazardous waste collection is May 22nd, which is a Thursday. Have we ever done a weekday collection before?
The past so many years, we've done. Though, since we've been doing it, the three times a year, it's always been on a weekday.
Okay.
And we get great turnout.
Okay.
And actually, the hazardous waste people recommend, and I don't know if it's because they don't want to work on a Saturday, which is a possibility, but we've been getting a good turnout on the, I was going to suggest maybe doing like, maybe a smaller one on the weekends. I just remember the last weekend one we had, we had 600 cars show up. So it was mass chaos. So that's why we kind of did the weekdays with the appointments. And it seems to be working, but maybe a smaller Saturday one for people who can't get off of work on the weekdays. We might be doing that in 2025.
Well, if it's working, why change it?
Yeah, right. I just, I feel bad for the people that maybe can't, you know, get off. But I don't know. A lot of people come through in their business suits. They just leave for a half hour or something. Because we get people through pretty quick the way we've been doing it, so.
Thank you.
Yep. This year, we were able to do some conservation talks at the, in partnership with the Dolem Center. Most of the talks were on like invasive species and native plants and things like that. And then we also were, did some invasive species presentations. Legacy Land Conservancy, Consumers Dolem. We've been doing them to the municipalities like the, every year we do some for the Department of Transportation. So they know what they're looking at when they're out, they're out driving around. We currently have nine grants. A couple of those are expiring. Two of the SISMA grants that we have, which is the invasive species grants, will be expiring. I think one is in December. And then one more is coming up too. But she is reapplying for those grants. And we just turned in her core grant. Yes.
At your events at the Dolem and stuff, what kind of turnout do you get?
At the, for the first couple, we didn't get very good turnout. There were maybe five people showing up. I don't know. We probably have to do just a little bit more. We thought that they would kind of help with advertising, but maybe, I don't know. It didn't, so like the first couple, we had five. The last one, we had like 20. So it went up for each one. Yep. Let's see. So like I said, we did, we just turned in last week our grant to renew our SISMA grant through the Michigan DNR. And our operations grant, we did get, it did get approved again this year through the state. I don't know. Let's see. It went away in 2008 and then came back a couple of years ago at 40,000 per Conservation District, which was able to give the district manager a much-needed raise and some benefits that she hadn't had for 14 years. And there's a project right now called Project 13 that the Michigan Department of, or Michigan Association of Conservation Districts is working on. We're trying to get funding from the state that would compare to surrounding states. So they're going for 13 million, which would let, so we could actually hire people, give benefits and raises to our grant employees and have some, maybe get a building and a truck and stuff like that. So fingers crossed on that one. Our NRC District Conservationist was able to bring $1.4 million in conservation projects for fiscal year '24 into our county. 4,500 acres of land was impacted with the funding. Some of the practices include cover crops, nutrient management, filter strips, fence rows, livestock watering pipelines, trees, pollinators, invasive species management, et cetera. Some upcoming events, so one of the biggest upcoming events for me is all the end-of-the-year stuff that I have to do, which is a great time. Our JCCD Annual Dinner is coming up on Tuesday, January 28th. So here's your notice. You'll all be getting an invitation. I'd love to see you all there. We will be at Jean Davis's again. And this year's speaker will be Tess Van Gorder with Michigan Farm Bureau. And she'll be discussing carbon credits. And then our tree sale. We're working on our catalog right now. All the trees have been ordered, and that will all go live at the beginning of January. Any questions?
Any questions? Margie?
Is the tree sale strictly cataloged online?
It's, we do send a paper catalog if you still want it. And then there's an online store as well. Yep.
Commissioner Chatwell.
When you were talking about a building, owning property and everything like that previously under that grant, is that the state Conservation District getting a building? Or is that Jackson County Conservation District owning an office?
Did I say something about a building?
Yeah, you did.
Oh. Okay. For, for the funding?
Yeah.
So for the funding, it would be nice to get out of our current situation, which is with the NRCS, just because we're under a lot of federal rules there. And just getting somebody on a computer system took my Meep Tech 11 months to get a computer. So she worked on her personal laptop and wasn't able to access it. So we'd probably maybe look for not a building, but an off, like a, maybe something to rent to be out on our own.
Well, keep us in mind as a possible renter, because we talked about that six or eight years ago. And we're looking at it, and it was decided that the current location was better for you.
Because of that?
Well, you, that was, that was an observation made by others than us.
No, yes. So we do have one employee that works directly with NRCS. We thought we were losing that grant employee, and we did get him back. So, but there are other districts that work outside of NRCS offices and still have that employee. He just goes back and forth between the offices. So it's, it's not an issue. But no offense to the federal government, but this year's been, it's been pretty bad the past couple of years trying to get things from them. So maybe things will change. I don't know that. But right now, it was like 11 months to get a computer access. She technically wasn't even supposed to be in our office, that whole 11 months that she was hired, because she didn't have the government clearance yet. So if we could somehow get away from that, that would be nice, but we just can't afford that at this point.
Any further questions, Lori? No further questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
You've had a busy year. Motion to receive by Poleski, supported by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item four E. Equalization. The amended 2024 county report. Welcome, Joseph.
Good morning. So like I said, last month, we may had to make an amendment if a millage passed, and Napoleon passed a road millage. So the only change from that report is adding that road millage to those three little pages. So now we just have to approve that. Once it's approved, I can submit it to the state. Napoleon's road millage passed, 53 to 46. So there were three that were going to affect '24's year, and that's the only one that passed.
What's that now?
There were three that were going to affect the 2024.
Okay.
And that's the only one that passed, so.
Commissioner Poleski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. I assume you need this once the Board of Canvassers have certified the election. So we're kind of doing this in advance, or assuming they're going to approve?
So.
The vote?
We do have to assume that they're going to approve that vote, but the state requires this to be reported by December 1st. Otherwise, they're unable to collect. So it's one of the, there are different laws that came out at different times. They kind of cross over, because the portion reports required to be done in October, but we have to amend it. So in order for me to have you guys amend this and get it submitted to the state, we kind of have to, to jump ahead a little bit, but yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to adopt the amendment as suggested, assuming the Board of Canvassers certifies that the millage has passed.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Poleski, support by Snell to send this to the full board, contingent upon the election being certified. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item four F. Finance. Welcome.
Good morning. So it looks like the first thing on the agenda is the selection of an audit firm for '24, '28. So as you know, 2023 was the last year of a five-year contract with Raymond. And looking at our county policy 1170 regarding annual audit, it talks, it says, "Vendors who have contracted with the county to perform audit services for Jackson County within the last five years shall be considered, if another qualified vendor is not found, as determined by the selection committee." So there were five audit firms who did respond to our quo pro RFP, and they're listed below. The first, Manor Custodian, and also Yo and Yo is way over our, what we can afford. So right away, we just didn't really consider them. But Andrews Hooper Pavlik, Clark Schaefer Hackett, and then Raymond were the three that we did look at. The ones, we did have an audit review committee. It was myself and Jay Dots, two senior accountants. We did interview through Zoom Andrews Hooper Pavlik and Clark Schaefer Hackett. And at the end of the day, we were more impressed with the experience. And, and to be honest with you, their full answers, they were very prepared, had statistics for us. So we were very impressed with Clark Schaefer Hackett. And that's who we were bringing before the board for, as a proposal for our new audit firm for the next five years. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. If not, we need a motion and support to send to the full board, recommendation for Clark, Schaefer, and Hackett for the next five years to do our audits.
I will believe that.
Support.
A motion by Poleski, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll go on to our September report.
So, so yes, our September financials report, so it'll be 9/12th of the year, 75%. As you can see, looking at the benchmark, we are under budget with our expenditures. We're at 73.1%. The easiest way to explain that is looking at our wages and benefits. We are very under budget for that, meaning there's savings. It's due to turnover and the time taken to fill positions, so. And then our revenues, we pretty much are, we are collecting the revenues as is expected. It does look like the three-year average is a lot higher, but as I've explained over the past couple of times, is we, there are revenues that we received the past three years that we aren't receiving now as reimbursements for COVID, for example, that it looks like it's skewing our percentage. But, but basically, looking at our revenues, our property taxes have come in at budget as a little bit over. I don't have the receivable yet, but we're looking good with property taxes, and that's a $36 million, well, actually, it's like $28 million budget. So, so at, as, so financially wise, I don't have any concerns. Are there any questions?
Questions, Board? Commissioner Poleski.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Talking about the revenues, yeah, we're a little short, shorter compared to prior years. But if the operating transfers in had been higher, you'd have been right there. And are those the items that you were talking about from prior years that?
No. No. Basically, what I'm talking about from prior years, we received a lot of COVID reimbursement money.
Yeah.
That we aren't receiving anymore. So that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. I haven't got any concerns, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the chance to comment. I'll, I'll move to receive the report.
Motion is received by Poleski. Support by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have H, HR. Talk about post-65 retiree medical supplement insurance. Welcome.
Good morning. So today, we had the postponement. We already approved two of the insurances, the active employees as well as the pre-65. Now comes before you the post-65. We're waiting on the finalization of the federal government for the rates. So we do have those. And we do have a recommended change to the current. The current plan for the post-65 is a Medicare Supplemental Plan, Plan F. And we are recommending a transition to Medicare Supplemental Plan, which is a Medicare Advantage Plan. The plans are structured a little bit differently. If we stay with the current plan, it would result in a cost increase of approximately $440,000. By transitioning the plan, it'll be a cost savings of approximately $550,000. In the materials that were presented to the board, it has a lot of the differentials of the plans. The plans are heavily regulated by the federal government on how much cost. Between the two plans, the key point is neither plan can exceed a $1,000 out-of-pocket cost to the participant. So that's the maximum out-of-pocket for the employee. I'd be happy to answer any questions or dive into the specifics.
Questions, Board?
I'll support that. Any questions, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Poleski.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael, for bringing this forward. So really, this is what plan do we provide to our employees? We don't provide like a reimbursement for them to use?
Correct.
Okay.
So this, this is an actual plan.
Right. I mean, there are some consumers retirees, for example, who, for Medicare retirees, they simply provide a certain dollar amount, and you pick and choose what you want to buy.
Yeah, that's not the setup of this.
That's not the setup here. Is there a possibility of moving to something like that?
There is. This is a high, this one is one of the highest benefits to employees, the, the actual cost offerings to employees. That could be an offering we look at in the future that would be potentially a cost savings to the county, if that's what you're referring to.
So I was going to ask what, how much are, if we adopt this, what's the cost per retiree ballpark?
Well, the problem is some retirees, this is a variable, because some retirees don't pay anything into this plan. So out of 494 participants, there is, one second, 247 that do not pay any cost in, currently to the plan.
But I'm, no, I'm talking about the cost to us.
Oh, to us as a plan. So yes. So the cost to us as a plan for the current is $2,236,2,013. And the projected new plan will be $1,839,399.
So 1.8 million divided by how many retirees?
494.
Divided by 400 and?
94 participants. Mm-hmm.
That's 3,600 roughly each. Okay. That, that's where I'm starting to wonder, okay, if we offered a $3,500 thing, a $3,500 option, people could use it for whatever. They could pay Medicare premiums, they could buy an advantage plan.
Correct.
At zero premium, okay? For example.
It'd be up to them at that point.
That's right. That's, I'm just, I, I'm perhaps going to get ruled out of order here, because I'm not germane to the motion, but just thought I would ask.
Yeah. And, and part of the concern too, is we'd have to look at legal, because we were responsible for providing. So if we go into reimbursement and provide money as opposed to a plan itself, we have to make sure we're not running afoul of what we say we provide. So we.
All kinds of stuff to deal with, I'm sure.
Things to look at. And I'll take it under note for the next proposal to say, this is something we'd like to investigate. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to go beyond the scope of the motion.
Not an issue. Glad to hear it. Okay. We have a motion by Snell, support by Poleski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning. Got the first, first item is a replacement of the bleachers at Keely Park, mainly used for the county fair. And we applied for a grant back in March, MDARD grant. We received a good portion of what we requested. So this is basically a proposal to replace the bleachers in the show arena that's used for the fair, and then the temporary bleachers that we move around, that we use for the two free acts over by the birthing barn, and then up, up near the south end of the grounds this past year. So the total cost is $100,000, 695. And a good majority of that, just over $58,000, is coming from this grant and private donations. So we did recommend the low bid, and this was approved at the fair board last week.
This is paid for through a grant? Pays 50%?
Yes.
And what pays the other 50?
So the other 50, so we've got just over $37,000, $37,971.46 coming from the fair fund. And that's actually a consumer's energy rebate that we received this year for some barn lighting upgrades. So while it's coming from the fair fund, it's not coming from fair proceeds. And then there's a small amount coming from the American One Equipment Fund, because these will be used, small, small events at the American One Event Center as well.
Okay. Questions?
Move to adopt the staff recommendation.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion to support this and send this to the full board. Motion by Poleski, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Yes. Yes. So the second item is related to fundraising for the Cascade Falls. So this campaign has been reinvigorated. It was pretty active from 2014 to 2018, while we had an agreement with the Jackson Community Foundation to receive donations for the Cascade Falls. So we had this agreement. This is an amendment, basically. Chairman Chatwell and I met with Monica from the Community Center, or from the Community Foundation. And the goal is to get this updated, to be able to use this fund going forward to take donations. We've got the ability as the county to accept donations as well, but some folks prefer to give to the community. We've got the ability as the county to accept donations as well, but some folks prefer to give to the Community Foundation directly. So this is just related to gifts for the Cascade Falls.
Questions? There's no questions. Need a motion and support?
So moved.
Move by Walls, supported by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Most in passions unanimously. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Move on to item five, the claims. Make sure you sign the packet. Need a motion and support to pay the claims? Motion by Snell, supported by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass this unanimously. Other, other minutes, we do not have any. Reporting schedule for next month is finance report, treasurer quarterly, clerk semi-annual. Next up, we have public comment. Any public comment? No committee comment today, for lack of, public, we have no public comment. Committee member comment? Any committee member comment? No committee member comment. That's the meeting. I'll adjourn to-